Going to call the Cromwell Town Council special meeting, amended special meeting, to order at 7:00 PM. If everyone could take their seats. Thank you Paula. And just for that, in a moment when we start the Pledge of Allegiance, I will give you the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so. Alrighty. Okay, Paula, will you guide us in the Pledge of Allegiance then?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
We have a new amended one now?
Correct. So from, under finance, there is an addition under finance. I can tell you if you give me a second. Item seven is added, or item, yeah, item seven is new to this amended agenda. So this is discuss and approve town manager's recommendation to consider using 1.5 million of capital fund to offset the interest payment on a short-term note for the Cromwell Middle School project. And when we get there, the Board of Finance Chair will be coming to the meeting and the Finance Director is here to talk about the opportunity to reallocate some funds that are in the existing budget to pay the interest on the short-term note. So it's, they'll explain it. It's an opportunity to move some money around to potentially save, or pay down some of the debt a little early. So with that, I have a motion made by Jack, but I don't have a second. Do I have a second? I have a second from Paula. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention motion carries unanimously. Next, I have the resignation of Town Council Member Stacy Dobrowski. As discussed in a prior meeting, Councilwoman Dobrowski has decided to resign. I read her letter into the record at that prior meeting. However, she wants to be able to use her time somewhere where she thinks it will be better applied based off of some of her experiences that she had. Her and I have had some conversations about ways that, you know, we can improve communication and be more effective. And she's looking into opportunities to continue to serve the town in a different capacity. So on behalf of the council, I want to thank Stacy for her year and a half of service to the Town Council. It's difficult to give up those weeknights and to give up all the extra time for all the events and everything else. And I think anyone who volunteers their time to be part of civic service should be commended. So I want to thank Stacy for her service, for her insight, and for her energy. And with that, I will accept a acceptance of the resignation with regrets if somebody would like to make that motion. Made by Paula, second by Jack. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. So with regrets, we accept the resignation of Ms. Dobrowski. Which brings us to item E, which is discussion and possible action of the appointment of the Town Council Member vacancy. At this point, I would like to put, open nominations. And so the way I'll do this is, I'll open nominations. I'll ask if folks have nominations.
Can I?
Yep.
Before we get started with nominations, I'd like to say that, in the interest of the people of the town, when they changed our terms in the last election from two years to four years, what they overlooked was the replacement of vacancies. Every other elected committee in this town replaces their vacancies to the next municipal election. This seat is being up for grabs for the next two years and eight months because when they changed our terms, it was not changed in the charter. I don't think that it's fair for six of us elected officials to be able to appoint somebody to an elected seat for a duration of the better part of three years. I'd like to offer via charter, we can have a special election. It can also be attached to the referendum that may be put up so that it's free of cost. And let the townspeople decide who sits in a vacant seat in the highest level of government that we have for the next better part of three years. Anybody who would choose to be nominated can put their name on the ballot. And that a way the townspeople, in the interest of fairness, can then choose who they want to represent them on our Town Council for the duration of that vacancy.
But then wouldn't we need more than one name?
If one person wants to run, one person can run, no?
And it has to be the, yeah, it has to be the right party, yeah.
No, this is all not correct according to the charter. You have 30 days amongst yourselves.
Forty-five. Forty-five days to make a decision.
Forty-five days amongst yourselves.
Then it goes to.
To choose a replacement for the vacancy. If you cannot come to a decision, then it would go to a special election. So right now.
But don't we have the ability to forego that 45 days and send it directly to special election?
Not the way I read the charter.
Well, I've read it five times yesterday.
I'm sorry, I disagree. It states the 45 days and the council can keep nominating people up till the 45th day. And then at that time, if there's still an impasse, then it would go to a special election.
So, let me just read the section to address it. So filling of vacancies. A vacancy on the Town Council shall be filled for the remaining term within 45 calendar days by a majority vote of all the remaining Town Council members. In filling any vacancy, the Town Council shall select an eligible elector from the same political party as the former Town Council member, if any, or an elector nominated by that political party regardless of the nominee's political affiliation, provided the obligation of minority representation is maintained. In the event the remaining Town Council members cannot reach an agreement on a replacement by majority vote, there shall be a special election held within 30 days after the initial 45 days has expired. So should we, should we not be able to decide on somebody within 45 days, then 30 days after that, we have to have a special election. And the, by, if we are able to do it by consensus, then it is either by consensus of a person of the same political party, or if the political party has nominated somebody of a different political party, then we can accept, or we could accept that person as well in the alternate. So.
Mr. Mayor, I believe if it goes to election, then it's open.
Yes, if it goes to an election, then it, if it goes to a special election, then it would be an open seat.
And I believe, I don't have, I didn't bring it up yet, but I believe there's something in there about minority party, in which case, the potential is that the minority party could change.
Correct.
So.
So the charter, the way it's written, is that, well, actually by state statute, we have to have a minority representation on any board or commission. So that would be two Republicans, two Democrats, or in towns that don't have majority Democrat or Republican, if they have like a working families party or independent party or something like that. Those would count as the minority. So in this case, right now, you know, if we have, we currently have the makeup of three elected Republicans, two elected Democrats, and the mayor who is elected Democrat. So hypothetically, it could, as long as there's two of any party, minority representation has been achieved. So right now, there are two Democrats, so there could never be less than two Democrats. There's, well, myself, the mayor, yeah. So there's, there always has to be at least two counselors from the same political party. So I guess the question for us, we don't have a mechanism to kick it to, directly to referendum or to a special election. We have 45 days to try to appoint somebody ourselves. And then if that is unsuccessful, then we have 30 days thereafter to try to have, to have the special election held. So Brian, your point is duly noted. However, I will accept any nominations from any of the counselors for filling the appointment, because that is what the charter dictates has to happen first. And if we're unable to reach a consensus, then it would go to a special election after 45 days. So we accepted, the resignation was submitted two weeks ago. We accepted it this evening. And then, so I think the 45 days would start ticking from the acceptance of.
And the vacancy would be filled for the duration of Stacy's seat, not just till the next?
That is what the charter prescribes. One of the things we did at our last meeting was to reconvene the Charter Revision Commission, so.
But I didn't see on the agenda for any appointees or anything today?
I didn't, I didn't get any of the applications in from anybody formally. So I had people who were interested, but I didn't receive any, Amanda didn't receive any of the applications for commission positions. So I'm going to follow up to make sure everyone gets that filled out. And then we can have a special meeting, if we want, very soon, to get those appointed so those folks can start working. But I know that there are several people who are interested. I spoke with Mr. Kanata, who I see in the audience. I spoke with a couple of other folks as well who are interested. So what I hope to do is, is once I have consensus about who everybody wants and who everyone wants to nominate, I got the applications to them. They submit the applications and we can have a special meeting quickly to appoint them and get them started. So with that, back to agenda item E. So I am looking at the charter. So what I will do is, I will accept any nominations of somebody either from the same political party or nominated by the political party, regardless of the nominee's political affiliation. I will, go ahead, Paula, go ahead.
I just want to nominate somebody.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Ann Hewlic.
Hi. A nomination has been made by Paula. And so are there any seconds on that nomination?
If I may?
Sure.
For discussion, can you give me your take on this as the mayor?
Yeah. So I think the charter is pretty clear that we have the obligation and the responsibility by charter to fill the seat. And the charter is, is clear that it's for the entire duration of the term of the vacancy that occurs. If we want to change that, we're having the mechanism by which to do that coming up in Charter Revision. So Charter Revision is about to happen. So we can definitely get that changed for future councils. Any changes to Charter Revision that we would do would impact post 2020, 2025 terms if we are able to get it on the November ballot. So if we want to make changes for future councils, it would be after the duration of this term is done anyways. So we wouldn't be able to make any pre, durational changes to this council. It'd be for the next duly elected council. So, do I have a second on the nomination? Well, I will then do, I don't normally second motions, but I do have the ability to second motion. So I will second the motion for the nomination of Ann Hewlic. I will also indicate that she has been endorsed by the Democratic Town Committee, being that she is of the same political party of the person who is vacating the seat. But if there are any other nominations for any Democrats that the council would like to consider, I will take those nominations now. Hearing no other nominations, I'll ask again, are there any other nominations for the position to be filled? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to close nominations? Made by Paula. Do I have a second? Second by Julia. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I will close nominations. There is one nominee. And so now I will ask for a, now that, any further discussion on the nominee? Would the nominee like to address the council and accept the nomination before we go to a vote? If you could go up to the, to the microphone? Hold on. The microphone is temperamental. It needs a little love, yeah.
Sit down. Yeah. So I'm Ann Hewlic, and I am honored to accept the nomination.
Ann, would you like to give a little introduction to yourself and some of your background?
So I've been a Cromwell resident for quite some time, over 12 years. I moved away for a little bit, lived here previously. I am a nurse and an attorney. I am the Connecticut Director for a nonprofit environmental organization. I've served as an alternate on the Board of Finance. In Southington, when I was there as a resident, I served on the Conservation Commission. I am very interested in serving my town. I care deeply about Cromwell, and I'm happy to be nominated.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
And I will just say that I have had the privilege of working with her on the DTC, where she has served prior as our secretary for a prior term. And I find Ann to be a great asset, not only to that organization, but to the town. I know on Board of Finance, she was well-regarded. And, you know, was a big asset to that group as well. So, does anyone have any questions for Ann about anything? Okay. Any further discussion? So, I mean, I'm going to be in support of this nomination. I feel that the charter is pretty clear about the initial vacancy being filled by an elector of the same political party. And I think that the most recent precedent that we had for that was when we replaced Councilman Fortenbach, when he became mayor, with a member of the same party, and that was unanimous. So we always have done a really good job of, of rising above political affiliation and making determinations based off of, you know, the charter. And I think we have a precedent that we just did last session that was very similar, where we replaced somebody, albeit I understand our term has changed from two to four years, but I don't think that changes the operation of the provision, because otherwise the provision is, I think, fairly similar, minus the opportunity for the political party to supplant somebody or supplement somebody with a different party at the discretion of the political party that was vacated. So I'm in support of this. And if we're unable to come to a consensus on today's nominee, we have 45 days to work together to try to find a, see if there's a nominee of the same political party. Or if the political party nominates somebody else that is not of that party, to see if we can reach consensus on. I'd very much like to be able to seat somebody. If not, after that, we'll have a special election within 30 days. So with that, I will call the question, because it's been made and seconded. So all those in favor of the appointment of Ann Hewlic to fill the remainder of former Councilwoman Dobrowski's seat, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. And raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four. All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay and raise their hand.
Nay.
Nay. So four to two. That is a majority of the seated council. So Ann, congratulations, you've been appointed by the majority of the council to serve the remainder of the term.
Thank you, sir.
We will now have a brief swearing in by our town clerk, Joanne Doyle, who is here for the evening. And so, just for those of you who are watching at home, it is being broadcast. If you are using the old YouTube channel, which I guess no one at home would, there's a new YouTube channel that is in HD, and that's the one you should be using, and the audio is in that one. But if you're not using that YouTube channel, you're not hearing anything. So I guess you're not hearing this message. But it's in HD now, which is really nice. Go ahead, Madam Town Clerk.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Town Council for the Town of Cromwell, to the best of your abilities, so help you God, for upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Come on over and sign the book.
Alrighty. With that, Ann, you may take your seat right here. Yep, you can take your seat right here between Jack and Julia. I promise they'll treat you well. You're, you're in a good seat too, because sometimes the judge brings cookies. So that's, you'll have direct access to the sweets. With that, we'll move on to item F, which is discussion and possible action in executive session on the case of Town of Cromwell versus Gilead Community Services. And I would like to invite the whole council in, the Director of Finance, the Town Manager, anyone else, chief? Okay. And those, those folks in. So can I have a motion to go into executive session at 7:20? Made by Jack, second by Al. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Okay, we are in executive session at 7:20. Alrighty. If everyone can come back to order, we can get started back into our agenda. Correct. Alrighty, everyone. So I will accept a motion to come out of executive session at 7:37. Made by Al, seconded by Paula. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor coming out of executive session, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, abstention motion carries. Alrighty. So I will begin by asking for a motion to approve 1.4 million dollars to be paid by the town once the release is signed to the plaintiff's attorney. Motion by Julia, second by Jack. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, abstention motion carries unanimously. I will accept a second motion that, as follows, at the appropriate time to release the remaining funds back to the town's general fund. Motion made by Jack, second by Al. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention carries. I will make the following brief public remark. This is hopefully, and I'm pretty sure, the last moving part of the Town of Cromwell versus Gilead Community Services litigation. And this should resolve any outstanding issues related to that case. And as such, the town will be able to move on from that situation. So I thank the counselors for their work and patience on this. I thank the town for their patience on this. And I look forward to brighter days ahead. So. And that it has. So with that, I will now move on to commission chairman reports, liaison reports, and/or staff reports. Beginning with, you have in your packet an update from the Cromwell Middle School Building Committee. I don't see anyone from the Building Committee here to give an in-person update. But are there any other liaisons or commission chairs that want to give any updates? I know Alice and Mike are here. Do you, any updates from planning and zoning that you wish to give the body? No? I've been watching, in HD. Great. When you find one, you let us know, because I think every town in Connecticut is. Absolutely. No, I don't, I do not disagree with you at all. So I'll move on to the mayor's report. Oh, we'll do the Town Council ones when we get to Town Council liaison reports. I realize I've been mushing those two together, and they are technically two separate line items. So the mayor's update, it went to the WIS Science Fair earlier in the month, actually I think it may have been in February now. And the science fair was really incredible. We had, I think there were like over 100 kids that had exhibits. It was really, really great. A number of kids gave me the tours. The event was only an hour long, or an hour and a half long. So I think six kids gave me full presentations, and each of their presentations took like 10 minutes. So I wasn't able to see all the tables, but the presentations I saw were really cool. I, it was really great to see the community all get together for that. I know the organizers worked really, really hard for that. So that was a really great event. Yesterday, we welcomed Congressman Larson to the Senior Center, where he gave a presentation on social security. I think anytime we get anybody from the state delegation to DC to come into Town Hall, it's a good thing to get the feet on the ground. So it was good to hear from him and hear his updates on social security. Other than that, we've been together a lot this last month. So we passed a budget. We have made some really great investments, I think, as a Town Council in infrastructure in this town, and really pulled up our bootstraps. And while tightening our belts, we did both at the same time. And I think we made some really positive investments. Some things I wanted to just give you all a heads up on. The Diversity Equity Inclusion Community Forum is on Monday, the 27th. You can still register for that. And the approach that the town is taking, the Town DEI Commission is taking on that, I think is really thoughtful. I just want to read the, and I met with them and helped them workshop this, but it says, the title of the forum is Advancing Understanding. And it says, during a time when our country and community have different viewpoints, the only way to come together is to understand each other. And we're invited to join in a conversation about Cromwell and share your personal experiences that have allowed you to feel connected or disconnected from the Cromwell community. So the focus of the conversation, I think, is about belonging and understanding and mutual respect, and, you know, what different people have felt and experienced in Cromwell. And I think by tailoring it to that discussion point, we can keep it local and keep it focused on how we can build a better, more united and community where everybody feels welcomed. And I think that that was a really thoughtful approach by the DEI Commission, and I helped, I worked with them to develop that, and I'm very happy with that. In addition to that, you'll be hearing later this evening from the, from the Cultural District, the application has been sent to the state, and we do have a date of April 3rd for their Department of Economic and Community Development. It's going to be coming and doing a tour of Cromwell. I've been working with the Cultural District Commission to develop that, and we're going to have another special meeting next week. So what that is going to entail is, we are seeking tonight your approval on the council to have the entirety of Main Street to the River be designated as a cultural asset in the Cultural District in town. And we hope to give a tour on the senior, we're going to use one of the senior services buses, to give a tour to the State Department of Economic and Community Development of the whole Cultural District. So the Cultural District has four subparts. The Historic Riverfront, which is our beautiful river, which is a wonderful asset, even though she's a little over, overrunning her banks right now. She's, she's still a beautiful asset. The Historic Houses, which are in themselves an architectural walkthrough of American history. From, if you start at the bottom of Main Street and you go up to the Historical Society, you will see every architectural classic style in American homes. Everything from colonial to modern to Queen Anne, to Dutch colonial, Italianate colonial, Rococo colonial, you'll see them all, which I think is really a unique aspect that in less than a mile, you can see all that. We then have our historic greenhouses. Some, at the time, they were the largest single-site greenhouses in the country. We then have the TPC at the top, which is the, you know, the largest, second-largest sporting event in New England, largest sporting event in Connecticut. We have a state park over off of Field Road. And we also have the Fish and Game Club, which is a private game club that has multi, like, I don't know how many acres, but I would venture to say, how many acres? 300 acres of untouched natural land that is used by members of that club. So in all, you know, the town has such a diverse array of assets. We also have a college in this section as well, a seminary and a college. So I think there's a lot to highlight. We have one hour to give them the tour of the whole area. So we are going to be giving the best of hits next, on April 3rd. And then we'll be treating them to dinner as well, or lunch as well. So I'm really hoping that the state sees the value in our cultural assets here in town, because I think we have a lot to give, and I think we punch above our weight. And I think our Main Street is truly an American Main Street. I think you get the best of everything on our Main Street. So by expanding it beyond what was our original borders, which were just downtown, we are encompassing the businesses that are where Freddie's nostalgia are. We're encompassing the TPC, we're encompassing the state park. So we're adding more assets that people can come and visit town and hopefully spend their time and money here, visiting our small businesses.
Mr. Mayor, we didn't vote.
Mr. Mayor, we didn't vote on that, those boundaries, when it was you, Jack, and I here?
We did not, because we were not able to, we didn't have a quorum for that. That was a public hearing. So the public hearing was for the public to come forward, give testimony, but now we actually have to vote on it. We didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't. So those are my updates. I'm happy to answer any questions about them. Oh, I will say as well, I know it's later on in the agenda, but I've so far gotten, I think, 26 or 27 responses from the community, or the employee survey. And so there's another week or two for employees to get that in, so I'm hoping to see that number bump up, because that's about a fourth of the town employees right now. So I'd like to see that number get a little higher. It is anonymous. They can submit it paper or via email. So I'll continue to track that with HR to see as they come in. Once those come in, I will distribute those to the council and to the public, so everyone can see the results of that. And we can discuss if we want to, if we have any thoughts about anything. One thing that I'm noticing is there are some people who say that they don't feel appreciated by the council in some of the early results, so I just want to, you know, say to anyone who's listening, thank you for the work that you do. But also, I will be more aware of that moving forward, you know, for the people who work really hard for this town and to make the town the best version of it that it can be. You know, you deserve recognition, you deserve fair treatment, and you deserve to feel like we hear you and know that the work that you do is valuable. So I want anyone listening who works for the town to hear that, and I want to express that. But, so please continue to fill out those surveys. Yep?
Mr. Mayor, when were the letters supposed to go out to the town employees, reference to the questionnaires? Didn't we talk, was it supposed to have been maybe about a couple of months back?
Yeah, there was, there was an email issue, and then we workshopped it to make sure that they could be anonymous. And so they ultimately went out, I think, middle of February?
Beginning of March.
Beginning of March. And they have till the end of March to get them back to me. So the, again, those questions that we asked was, I feel comfortable expressing my thoughts and opinions freely. I feel appreciated by the town manager. I feel appreciated by my director or department head. I feel appreciated by the town council. I know what is expected of me at work. I know, I know how my work contributes to my goals. My supervisor can be accounted up to do what they say they will do. The person I report to holds me accountable for my results. I know what is important to the town manager. I know it is important to do the right thing in this organization. And individuals and departments are encouraged to work towards goals together, and this organization helps and encourages people to work together, even if it's not specifically my job. So those were the questions that we approved, I think, in December for the survey.
If I may?
Yep.
Just to conclude on that, some of the people that were sent out letters, even though what you received, some of them have left their employment with the Town of Cromwell. So you're not going to get as many as what we initially got, because some retired and some would just picked up and left.
Yeah. What I'll say to that is every employee who's currently here is welcome to fill out a survey. If they are leaving, you know, if they leave before March 30th but want to fill out a survey now, they can do so, and we'll be happy to review the surveys. They are anonymous, so we don't know who, if it's from somebody who's leaving or somebody who's still here, unless they want to identify themselves through their comments, because we do have, we do have open comments that they can write to us anything they like. And I encourage folks to do so, because I know, I think right now it's 136 pages of results. That's what the results just came to me as. So you can see how each survey is, you can see the summary, and then you can see the comments. So there's like three or four pages of comments right now. And they keep generating as more people do them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for me? Hearing none, we'll move on to our town manager report. Tony?
My report is in your packet. I just want to bring up a couple of things. It came to our attention today that the school building committee is now asking for another item to be considered, and it's not within the scope of the project either. They're looking for a 20 by 14-foot shed on a concrete pad, and they're telling us that they need $24,000. So I checked with bond counsel, and bond counsel is, again, of the opinion this was not within the scope of the project. In addition, in all likelihood, I briefly talked with the town planner. It may have to also go back to planning zoning, depending on how elaborate. But the fact that they, normally these are put down on three-quarter inch stone, and they want to put it down on a six to eight inch concrete pad. However, at any rate, we're dealing with one of those tonight that's not within the scope of the project. And because this is a special meeting, there was no way to combine it. So I'm just bringing it out for the council's knowledge that if you are so inclined, we would need a special meeting.
Would that have to go to referendum as well?
Yes. It would be another referendum question, which I think, I'll be blunt, I think it's going to start to confuse.
I think so, too. So let me ask this, with the current building, I'm assuming this is for equipment, like an equipment shed? Like for their, like, storage or something?
Yeah, the grounds, Claudio would like it so that they could keep grounds equipment outside.
And currently, in the current middle school, is there an outside storage shed in the current middle school?
Not yet. Are you aware of it?
Does the current middle school have a storage shed in its existing building?
Not that, yeah.
So what, they don't store any, any of their mowers or anything on, or I don't know if they even have any, but like any of their equipment on site?
I think they have a mower, I'm not sure where they store it.
Okay.
High school.
It's at the high school, okay. So what, I mean, my thought process on this, Tony, this is new information for me, but the way I'm thinking about it is, I think another appropriation would confuse people. If this is something they want to do as a capital item in a future year after the school is built, we can follow our normal capital improvement process, and they can, they can say, we want, as this year, one of our 12 items is to be a shed, and then we can consider the shed like we do normal capital project. I think adding on additional items, piecemeal like this at this point of the process, is going to be confusing to the residents and the taxpayers, especially since they're going to have to be voting on the solar panels. Then they're going to see this other item here, which hasn't gotten, it would have to, it would have to be a site plan modification, because it's a new structure. So I mean, I just think the better way to do it is if they really want it, this Board of Ed can apply to the town for a site plan modification next year, say, we want the shed, then come to us and we can approve the shed, or we can even do it as a mid-year appropriation if we feel really strongly about it. But that's just my feeling on it. I think...
I concur. I concur. If it's outside the scope, I think we should leave it for the time being, outside the scope, and go with what we, go with what we're planning on going with. Get that done and then move forward.
My concern is that they keep adding. Initially, there was a surplus, or shall we say, there was money to be left over. And being a taxpayer, I feel and that our bond will come down if they don't spend that money. And that's number one. If they've got surplus, which costs, not cost overrun, but to come in under budget, that's great. It's, it's nice to hear that. But it's also nice to hear that our bond will come down as taxpayers, rather than getting beat up 2000, maybe 26, when we get hit with it, 2027, because that's going to be a shock for every taxpayer in the Town of Cromwell. And I just feel that, I'm not going to say greedy, but there's got to be a limit to this.
I don't disagree. That actually triggered in my mind something that I should have put under the mayor's report. So we are, if, if the council today approves the two referendum questions that are under new business, I am, at a prior meeting, you authorized me to set a public hearing and a referendum date. Given the amount of time that we need for a referendum, once we have the question to be submitted to the Secretary of State, it's 45 days.
Correct you on that.
Sure.
So we went back, we were misinformed, so it's 30 days, and we don't have to send it to the Secretary of State. So...
Do we still want to do it at the same day as the budget referendum? That's what we talked about.
Our goal is to have one, one referendum, and the top three will be the budget questions, and the bottom one will be the question on adding this as the BV into the scope of the project.
I think that that, and so that was, I was going to talk about my mayor's update. I think doing it that way makes the most amount of sense. That way, everyone just has to come out to vote once. That means the election department here only has to have everything set up once. Everyone votes, you vote on your budget, you vote on this extra item for the solar panels at the same time. Everyone can go out once. I think if you break it apart, you're going to, and we already suffer with turnout for, and what's the date of the referendum on the budget? May 6. May 6. Everyone write that down, May 6. Everyone can only come out one time. I purposely scheduled my honeymoon for the week after, so that way I was, we were good, and then I could go on my honeymoon, so. So May 6, I think doing it in one thing will make the most amount of sense, and then I'll set a public hearing date as well. So that way, folks from the public have the opportunity to have a presentation from the building committee about what the solar panels would entail, what the proposal is and the cost. Now, the referendum questions, as you'll see later tonight, are about increasing the project scope and including the photovoltaic system. There was some discussion about whether we should buy or rent that system. Those decisions still are to be made after they get authorization for the increase in the scope. So what we have to, part of what the public hearing will explain is that the question on the ballot, or the two questions on the ballot, are about expanding the scope to include the photovoltaic systems. The individual, you know, what type, what company, what brand, all of that stuff will then go through the normal process that the building committee goes through, and whatever zoning or other approval processes that they need to go through. But they can't start that work until they're authorized to do so, because it's beyond the scope. So once they're authorized to do so, then they can start parsing it out. So at the public hearing, what I've asked them to do is present an overview of what they would entail, some possible design and concepts, some possible costs, and what the different pathways would look like of, you know, if they go, there may be three different choices, and one will be this much, and one will be this much, one will be this much, rent, buy, you know, use the Green Bank, use the, you purchase it outright, you know, and I know a lot of people have opinions on those things, too. But I want them to outline all of those options at the public hearing, and then at the referendum, people can vote about whether they want to expand the scope, and then they'll get to work about doing all of the things associated with that. Any other updates from you, Tony?
No.
Okay. Any questions for the town manager on any of those items? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to town council liaison reports. So now, Al, go ahead and give us some updates.
I was at the senior advisory commission, and they have a new chair, Dee Daly, which we also have a vice chair, and which was one of the fastest meetings we had. We got everything accomplished, and the buses were talked about. And the EDC, they held their meeting tonight. But at the last meeting that I attended, every quarter, they turn around business of the quarter. And to my knowledge, they picked someone tonight, that's up for them, that's who it is, but tonight they picked a new person, a new business for the quarter, which it's a nice A-frame sign, and it's letting these people get, they've been good business people in the Town of Cromwell, so that's why they come up with that. And I think that was part of Mr. Poppers and some of the EDC members, which I think was a very good idea. That's about it.
Any other council or liaison reports?
Yep. I attended the youth advisory board meeting on February 25, and on March 11, the youth services held a family resource expo downstairs in the gym and the lobby and the hallway and all over the place. That was on March 11, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, very successful, as it was last year.
So attended?
Oh, yeah.
Great. Julia?
I am, unfortunately, I did not watch you last night, but I know there was public hearing on zoning rules.
We continued it until the next one.
Okay.
Because we were still doing, we finally got the vendor to, to exact it.
Okay. So I'll either come to or watch the next one.
Very good, thank you, guys. Jack, anything for you?
Yeah, I just, there is, with the conservation commission, they have been spending time with Sustainable Connecticut, and there's a, there's a lot going on there. And it would take a long time for me to try to explain all the different aspects of it. But there are opportunities for Cromwell, I'll just put it as, to gain points, gain opportunities, to apply for grants, and do some other things that can have Cromwell participate more in that particular area, and maybe get some opportunities to get some things done and get some funds from other resources. And it's a, it's a very interesting idea and an interesting concept. It'll, it'll be, it'll be interesting going forward to see how far they can go with that.
Wishing them good luck. I'm glad that that is moving off the ground. And then, I don't have any... Yep?
We've been trying to get going there, but unfortunately Stuart decided to retire. And on that note, I am, I've interviewed three individuals for that position. Unfortunately, haven't been successful yet. And I have hired a new health coordinator, and she will take office on March 31st.
Will you invite her to the next council meeting, so we can meet her?
Sure.
Wonderful. I'd love to meet her. Alrighty, and I gave my updates already. So now we'll move on to item K, which is financial, finance director of report, who is wearing two hats this evening. So go ahead.
So you got the memo. Unfortunately, the recording was not clear of that meeting that night, and Amanda and I had different numbers. For the assessor's office, there was some confusion about overtime wages and what the council wanted to approve. The department request was 400, the town manager put it back down to 200. And then in the beginning discussion of the assessor budget, you agreed with everything but salaries, but then when you approved the total number, you approved it with the higher number, the 400. So I need to know if you want to keep the overtime at 400, like department request, or accept the town manager's recommendation of the 200 for the overtime wages.
And what would be the two total department numbers? Well, I guess, what would it be with minus 200 for that?
271, 568.
Versus add 200 to that?
271, 768.
Okay.
Make a motion, do we go according with the town manager's recommended?
Okay, motion made by Al, seconded by Julia. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. So we're going to go with that first amount. Okay. Next, discuss and approve fiscal year 2025, 2026, and fiscal year 2026, 2027 wage adjustment for the town clerk and tax collector. We discussed this prior. Their salaries cannot be changed while they're in office. However, we have the ability to approve a future tax collector or town clerk's wages in the future. It's kind of like how Congress gives themselves a raise for the next term, but, except for, we're not Congress voting on our own raises, because our raises continue to be 100% of zero. But for the town clerk and tax collector to give them those GWIs. Anything you want to add on that? Okay. Nothing to add, right, other than what's in your memo? Because we... Councilmember Henahan asked, why are we approving this now? The answer is because they are up for an election in the next, for the next fiscal year, so next year. So if we were to increase their salaries, we have to do it now, because we can't change it while they're in term. So we could change it for the term after next, but we couldn't change it for the next term. And we can't change it for the current term. So right now, they're, they're at whatever s- So, right now, they're, they're at whatever salary they level they're at. But if they, if we are going to increase their salaries, which I think they're getting a three percent GWI, then we would need to do that now for the future. And I, I think, you know, the town clerk and the tax collector, all of their staff are getting the same GWI that we're giving them. So, I think it makes sense, the recommendation, I think, makes sense, but I will defer to the deliberative body.
Okay. So, for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, what do you, what do you have for a number?
They're on the memo?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I pull the memo up?
So, you have the memo that was in your packet? Yes.
Yep.
So, it would be eighty-three thousand, seventy-one dollars and nineteen cents.
For both, or for the?
No, for each, each, so that's for the tax collector and each of them is getting that eighty-three.
Each of them would get that amount.
Could you repeat the number?
Eighty-three thousand, seventy-one dollars and nineteen cents.
That's the total, correct?
That's the total for both the town clerk and the tax collector for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, so let's. So, let's start with fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, we'll take it a year at a time. Do I have a motion to accept, to approve that amount for a salary for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for the town clerk and tax collector? Made by Al. Second by Jack, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Then, for the following fiscal year, what is the town manager's recommendation?
Eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventeen cents.
And what percentage does that represent for that year? Is that another three percent, so a three percent each year?
And again, that's for both the town clerk and the tax collector.
And right now, their staff that are in those departments under their collective bargaining agreement, are they getting a similar?
We're in negotiations.
You're in negotiations, okay. Okay, any further, do I have a motion on that? Yep, so do I have a motion for the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year for eighty-five, seven, seven, seventy-six, seventeen, which represents a three percent GWI for the town clerk and tax collector? Made by Paula, I'll give it to Jack because he tried to make the motion. So, made by Paula, second by Jack, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Next, on the agenda, item K three is the budget reports. You have in your packet an updated budget report. Anything to report on the budget reports, Sharon? Okay.
Because you changed the assessor's budget, can you please approve the bottom line again for the general fund budget?
So, the bottom line is twenty-three million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six. That's twenty-three million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six.
And zero cents?
For the general fund, general government budget.
And zero cents?
And zero cents.
Okay, so I'll put that under item K one, which is where we adjusted the, oh, I guess we adjusted both of those things, so.
Under two.
K two, so now that we have those, that number finalized, okay. I'll take a motion to approve a final general budget of the amount of twenty-three million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and zero cents, reflecting the two changes that we made this evening.
Two forty-six.
Two forty-six and zero cents. So, twenty-three million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six and zero cents, reflecting the two changes that we made this evening for the two-three percent GWIs and the two-hundred dollar adjustment to, down of overtime.
I have a question, sure.
Yep.
I know we had our budget, but what was the final figure for Shawna's increase in pay? Salary?
I do not have my budget book written, I apologize. I know what Tony proposed, but I don't know, I don't. You proposed one thirty-one, correct? One thirty-one.
And that's what she got?
That's what you approved.
That's what you, yeah. We approved the one thirty-one.
Correct.
Okay, no, good, I have it here, but I wasn't sure. Okay, thank you.
Any, do I, I don't know if, can I have a motion to approve?
Twenty-three million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars.
And zero cents. Can't forget that. I'll give it to Julia. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, now to our budget report.
So, in your packet are the budget reports that reflect the activities through the end of February. We are, you know, as always, we monitor through a few budget areas. And right now, I'm monitoring central services due to postage and paper costs and the amount of paper we are using. So, I am watching that one closely. I put in my memo, the dates for the Board of Finance budget meetings. They are scheduled for April third, April seventh, and if need be, April tenth.
Glad it's not on April first. Thank you. Any questions on the budget report? Okay, next, we have discussion and approval of the finance director's request for a bid waiver to the town independent auditor. So, do you want to talk through why you're seeking a bid waiver on this?
As a result of the recommendation by myself and the director of finance to the Board of Finance to continue with the auditor that we have for a number of reasons, including the the, the pool today is not what it used to be with regards to auditors. And in doing research on the firm that we have, they're well within the ballpark with their, with their charges. So, we made a recommendation and the Board of Finance concurred to continue with them for three more years, right?
Yeah, they accepted a three-year proposal.
So, as a result, we would then need a bid waiver from this body in order to go forward and, and hire them for an extra years.
I do want to let the board know, I did reach out to comparable towns. And what they are asking for the proposal is in line with all other towns represented.
Board of Finance, and you trust this firm and you have good results with this firm in the past?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
We feel that they've done an outstanding job for us while they've been with us.
So, we have a motion from Mr. Waters, do I have a second on that? A second from Mr. Henahan, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate, oh, any further discussion? No, hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Checked a little too early there. Okay, next, we have discussion and possible approval for the special revenue fund for cannabis sales. So, via state statute, now that we have allowed a recreational marijuana facility to come into town, which is still being built and subject to currently a lawsuit, but it's okay. Once they open and are able to begin sales, we will be getting a percentage of the sales tax on, I believe it's three percent. And there are limited reasons under state statute of what we can use it for it. But, and it has to go into a special fund and not be encumbered by anything else. But, we will be able to utilize that money for, I think, public safety and drug prevention? Oh, it's in the memo?
Is it an inscription of what we can use this money for, it's in how I express the fund?
No, it's not public safety, it's prevention, it's
Make improvements to the streetscapes and other neighborhood developments in and around each community in which a cannabis retailer, hybrid retailer, or micro cultivator is located. B, fund education programs or youth employment and training programs in such municipality. C, fund services for individuals released from the custody of the commissioner of correction, probation, or parole and residing in such municipality. D, fund mental health. And let me get my paper out here and I'll keep going, so we can all have it. Mental health addiction services, fund youth service bureaus established pursuant to section ten-nine-teen and to municipal juvenile review boards. Or F, fund efforts to promote civic engagement in communities in such municipality.
Okay, so a broad bucket of cross-section of uses that now we can use these funds for. In, in comparable municipalities, do we know how much revenue they've generated off of this? And any of the other towns that have had one of these open?
So far, I've only received two, and they're both cities, unfortunately.
Okay, well, how much do the cities generate?
So, Bristol currently has two retailers, and last year, they received three hundred and fifty thousand. Manchester has four, and they're at about four hundred thousand.
Well, I hope the Cromwell business does very well, because our, that's, that's.
So, we have one.
I mean, it's a double-edged sword, that is a double-edged sword, but I, that's, those are some healthy numbers.
Between fifty and a hundred.
That's three percent revenue?
Yes.
For them, yes.
Three percent revenue, is that much? Wow.
On top of that, we signed up for the opioid lawsuit.
Okay, so we have. Getting money for opioid prevention?
That we've been using in social services.
Yeah. Wow, three, that's a lot for two, so, wow. That's big money, there's big money in that business. I didn't think it would be that much.
If I may, Mr. Mayor? Are we allowed to have two dispensers in the town of Cromwell, correct?
We, this body, I think, and planning and zoning, both approved, I think, up to two, right? Or do we approve it and?
You approved it.
We approved it, and then you set the remainder of the regulations?
Right, one was for medical only?
No, two, no more than two.
No more than two.
One of which could be medical or recreational, and the other one could be recreational. So, it could be, right now, we have one permit that's been approved.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, and that's the one on three-seventy-two. Oh, two, that's right, we have a second one that is approved. And for the record, Mr. Kanata, who's the vice chair of planning and zoning, and he just updated that there was a second one approved by planning and zoning. However, because of a state regulation requiring them to be twenty miles apart from another location owned by the same owner, there's another one within twenty miles of the same owner. So, that, even though they, the state approved, approved them, they didn't approve them for that location, I suppose. So, it's for sale, so.
The location is still approved for cannabis.
The location is approved for cannabis, and that is by-party pizza back there, right? On that little side. Okay. So, what we need to do is if we, now that we've accepted marijuana in town, we need to set up our special revenue fund so that the funds aren't commingled with other funds. So, separate fund for this. So, I'll take a motion to establish a special revenue fund for the cannabis sales.
Motion approved.
Made by Al. Second by Jack. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously. Okay, next, we have discussion regarding House Bill seventy-sixty-seven municipal option to adjust motor vehicle assessments. I will call up the town assessor to discuss not only the bill, but the, what the legislature now, you know, maybe just explain the change the legislature made initially, then this new change that they made, and then what decision is before us, and then what you would recommend.
And the impact.
And the impact.
Potential impact.
Yes, I have it all for you, Jack. All right, so, just to get everybody up to speed. Back in twenty-eighteen, the governor wanted to have a task force and try to make some things more efficient. There was a motor vehicle task force, which I was on. And after all these years, they, one of the things was the motor vehicle assessments. The goal was to have it easier, have residents be able to understand what their taxes was going to be, and to have a car tax in Cromwell to be the same as in Bridgeport or Greenwich or somewhere like that. I mean, one of the recommendations was to have a mill rate for everybody on the, across the state. They did not take that part of the recommendation. But, they, this legislation came out that basically changed how we value cars in the town. So, cars before the twenty-four grand list were all based off of value. So, we used JD Power, also known as NADA before, and it would give you a clean retail value. And they also got very expensive over the time. And all the towns had to pay for JD Power, which, in my opinion, was just really ripping off everybody because they were the one show in town that DMV used. So, needless to say, the RFIs have been going up a lot. But, they switched from retail value, so how, how much is your car worth? It's as simple as that. Well, during COVID, car values went up, used car values went up a lot. Everybody would say, my car's older, but, you know, used car values went up during the COVID season. So, of course, this legislation that's been working its way through, there, all the assessments went up tremendously for the twenty-one and twenty-two grand list. So, they finally agreed to go to MSRP. So, basically, how it works is you take your, the MSRP from the year it was built. So, obviously, you can think about a nineteen-sixty-eight Corvette, you know, back then, they were five thousand dollars. You know, now, it would be much more. So, as time goes and MSRPs go up, the grand list will go up. But you take the MSRP, and then you take how old it is. So, well, for the twenty-four grand list, a twenty-four car is year one. So, everybody gets confused. So, if you had a twenty-three, it would be year two, so you would go to the two level. And they had a depreciation schedule that they came up with. So, there, initially, it was talked about doing ninety, starting at ninety percent year one, and it would work its way down and eventually got to ten percent. Well, that didn't pass, and then they wanted eighty percent. So, they went from eighty percent and down to ten percent. And so, during the legislative session, they negotiated and they ended up settling at eighty-five, which, I was the statistician for the whole state, I gave them what the impact would be. Everybody pretty well understood what it would be, it was pretty close to what I forecasted it to be. So, eighty-five got passed. What happened was, all the towns' grand lists went down, motor vehicle grand list. So, in the town of Cromwell, our motor vehicle grand list went down thirteen percent. It didn't affect, we did a slight growth on the grand list, but some towns, the grand list actually went down. So, a lot of towns started squawking, and so, they did this bill, part of the emergency certification here. They gave a municipal option. So, instead of starting at eighty-five, and it goes down until you get to a floor of fifteen, you can start at ninety and go to a floor of twenty. At least, they didn't really make it complicated. Basically, they're adding five percent to everybody's car, if, if you so choose to do that option. Well, they did this, usually, everything they do is for the future. Well, they allowed the towns to go back to the twenty-four grand list. And basically, say, if the town chooses to do this, we can redo the twenty-four grand list. So, that we, we would add fourteen point six million to, approximately, to our assessment. Now, that will not be any more money to the town. People think we're going to add fourteen point six million to our grand list, we're going to get more money. Actually, the town will not get any more money. We will be just shifting on who's going to pay this money. And in fact, if we do it for the twenty-four grand list, I will tell you, the town is losing money. Because part of this would be, we would have to redo anyone that had a car on their personal property, which is fifty-four of our accounts. We would also have to give them the right to appeal, the appeal board's just finished yesterday. But, we would have to open up the BAA again, and anyone could come. We would have to pay our clerk to go to the BAA session. We, we've done a hundred and, about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty adjustments already for people that came in and said, I got rid of my car, and we always prorate those. So, when you get your bill, all of those would be scrapped and would have to be redone. So, we would have to, I would have to have one of my staff stay after and redo these. We would have to pay to have a new grand list book done. So, again, we would not, the town would not get any more revenue. We would actually lose revenue if we do the twenty-four. If the council's inclined to do this, I would recommend going for the twenty-four. If the council's inclined to do this, I would recommend going for the twenty-five, at least it would be revenue neutral, if you think that it's better to do this. But, so what I did was, I looked at, you know, there's always winners and losers, as I say, the town breaks even basically besides the extra costs. And so I looked at the average house and average commercial, and I looked to see what kind of cars everybody drives and see what the average impact that would be. So on the cars, the average car tax bill will go up forty dollars. It's about point two-two of a mil, the difference. So they would, anyone that has a car, on the average, obviously, if you have a car that's older, it's gonna be less, or if you have a newer car, it'd be more. Then I looked at the residential homes. The average home will go down forty-five dollars. So you go, okay, down forty-five, one car's forty, so if you have two cars, now you're at eighty, so you're gonna be paying more. So the average resident will be paying, home will probably be paying more taxes. The commercials would, the average would go down a hundred dollars. And then all of our personal property, everybody that has personal property, that whole grand list would go down forty-six thousand dollars, that's being picked up by all the other people that have cars. So that's, that's some of the impacts that would be. So my recommendation, because it would cost the town money, is definitely not to do it for the twenty-four. I'm not even sure, I, I probably would recommend not doing it at all. I can tell you that there was a survey taken out there, and about sixty-five percent of the towns are doing it. For some reason, they think it's generating revenue when it really is not, so. That's what I have. Any questions you have for me?
Um, I'll start with my right and then move my way to my left. Any questions on this proposal?
What was the purpose behind this?
Grand lists went down. Everybody saw the grand list goes down. So it, it would just reflect in the mill rate, like I said, our mill rate will be point two-two higher.
But I mean, what was the purpose of the state doing this?
Overall?
Yeah.
From the way back, it's to make it easy, because now it's an MSRP times a straight line, you can forecast what your assessment will be every year going forward.
And does in fact, does it make it easier?
It does, after the first year, which was the twenty-four year, because your, your MSRP won't change. So you would think about it, every year we would have to redo, your car value change, but the MSRP always stays. So now, once you have an MSRP, the next year's just, you apply whatever depreciation factor. So it does make the motor vehicle part much easier.
Shauna, I'm sorry to go out of order, but just to jump on that question, is, was that the policy reason behind it? Was it so that if you moved to Middletown, or you moved to Canton, or wherever you moved, your car tax would be essentially the same no matter where you went? It was like equalized? That was the goal, but that's not.
If they had the same mill rate, it would be.
Okay.
But not every town has the same.
So it's still impacted by the mill rate, but the calculation every municipality uses is now streamlined?
Yes, the calculation would be all the same.
Um, okay, so I'll continue going right to left, so any other questions, Julia, for Sharon?
You said you would recommend doing or not doing something for twenty-five, what was that?
I recommend not, I would recommend not doing that at all.
Doing what?
Definitely not, uh, change, take, uh, enacting the ordinance that, that's in House Bill seventy-sixty-seven, which basically changes the depreciation from eighty-five to ninety, starting, and then every, then changing all the depreciation factors below.
So if we don't do that, what happens? We just, we're with the MSRP, we're with the eighty-five?
It, either way it would be MSRP, it'd be eighty-five percent, and it works its way down to eighty-five percent good, so you're getting fifteen percent off on year one, the other way, you're only getting ten percent off.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Curious about, you said sixty-five other towns.
Sixty-five percent of the towns.
Sixty-five percent of the other towns are moving in this direction.
Some are doing it for twenty-five and some are doing it for twenty-four.
Okay, and, and your thought was that they're doing it because they think it's gonna generate revenue for the town?
Yes.
Why are all those towns thinking that?
I can't tell you. I had one assessor call me up and say, thank God somebody understands this, but I've been involved with it from the very beginning, so.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So I, I guess, let me, let me ask my question, then we'll move along to you and then Paula. So I think what you're saying essentially is the reason you think that this would not be a revenue generator is because what we are essentially doing is taking the burden off of a household and moving it back to the motor vehicle, but by doing that, if the average household has one, I'll call it one point seven or one point five motor vehicles for a household, that they're actually gonna be paying more per household, because now their motor vehicle tax is going back up, and even if they get the savings on the home side, they're not actually getting a real savings. We just changed the column of where the savings is and actually upped the amount on the other end.
That is correct.
Okay.
And who would be saving is the commercial people.
And the, because they don't.
They don't have cars. I mean, two percent of our motor vehicle is, is motor, uh, commercial, so.
And what's the, I guess, what's the delta, the delta is the point two-two mils of, of an impact that we've taken?
Exactly.
But because our grand list grew, we've been able to absorb it better than other municipalities?
Well, no matter where you look at it, even if it went down, or if it went up more, it would still just be point two-two of a mil, it doesn't really matter what happened.
And then, I'm assuming statistically, it is not gonna be significant if we go to ninety in ten years and there, you know, the cars depreciate, the statistical depreciation of an eighty-five versus a ninety starting point is gonna be not?
Well, it's always gonna be that five percent delta.
So, but the five percent is not gonna be, it's not gonna be a make or break in the long term like that? The assessment that you did that the house, household would pay more? Is there a crossover point where, you know, or would that always be the case?
It would always be the case.
Perfect.
It would always be the case.
Perfect.
Now, of course, if a lot of towns do this, will they change it in the law? Who knows, and then we have no choice? I don't know. But at the moment, this is where it is.
Gotcha, okay.
Al.
Shauna, uh, commercial vehicles.
Yep.
What's the charge gonna be for commercial, meaning businesses with commercial plates?
Well, if you're talking about the vehicles, it's still this MSRP, so it's how much was it, manufacturer's adjusted retail price times whatever depreciation it is.
Okay, the next one would be considered like combination plates, same?
Same thing. Any, anything that could, anything that can be registered is under this, uh, if it's registered or not, it doesn't have to be registered. So that's how it affects personal property. It's anything that can be registered as a motor vehicle gets valued this way.
Classic plates?
Classic plates is always the exception to every rule because there's a separate statute to that, they're assessed at five hundred. And they did not change that.
Classic, they left alone?
They did. There, there's been a lot of push to try to get that to two thousand, um, but it's currently five hundred, which, as I said, the depreciation schedule, both of them go to a floor, one of fifteen percent, one of twenty, but it says it cannot be lower than five hundred. So no assessment, no motor vehicle assessment can now be below five hundred, which will affect some of the people that have trailers in our town, because we had a two hundred minimum, and now the statute is five hundred minimum, so some people are gonna see their trailer go from two hundred assessment to five hundred assessment. But I mean, we're talking, the bill is gonna be, what, fifteen, sixteen dollars, so. But I'm sure I'll hear somebody say, hey, how come it went from two hundred to five hundred? Well, because the minimum now is five hundred to match the classic.
Okay, so like, for example, campers?
What kind of camper are you talking about?
Well.
One of the driving ones, the one of pop-up ones, uh?
The pop-up ones, even you have the small trailers, the small ones, that they, some of the average people have just to go to the transfer station, they got, they got camper plates on that.
Yeah, so the trailers do have an exemption if it's a utility trailer, so it can't be a pop-up trailer, it can't be something that somebody's in. But if you have one that's a little one that you buy from Home Depot and it's used for personal use only, so it can't be in a business name, it has to be personally used. Those are exempt. We did send out a, um, we asked everybody to let us know about their trailers, because, because again, it is MSRP, and nobody really has a good price on MSRP for these trailers. But if it's a utility trailer, used for personal use, now those are exempt, so they won't even be taxed. But if it's not, if it's a commercial one, or if it's a pop-up, again, how much did it cost, times whatever is in the depreciation, it would be the same formula as the cars.
So if the average, well, I'm not gonna say the average, but there are some people that are not in business, but they do have the trailer dump.
Yeah, so those would probably be exempt. I mean, I would have a, obviously see, but again, a utility trailer, used for personal use is exempt under the new statute, which this ordinance has, has nothing to do with that, but.
Thank you.
Paula, any questions? Um, so because this would be, this would be an ordinance change, um, the question that I have for the council is, is there a consensus? Would we want to go forward and public, schedule a public hearing for this ordinance change, or do we want to just continue to follow the state statute? Yep.
So Shauna and I talked this over, and uh, correct me if I'm wrong, you're really not in a position to do it for this year?
It would be difficult because we have to get, the appeal board opens up till April second. We would have to get a new grand list by, and they would have to meet, and everything would have to be done in April, so you would have to do this as quick as possible, because it's thirty days from the date that the governor signed the bill that all this has to take.
So my recommendation is that we don't do it this year. We, we see how it, it goes, and I, I think we can project how it's gonna go. And I, I agree with Shauna, you, we're just, you know, taking from Peter and paying Paul or vice versa out of the left pocket to the right pocket.
Yeah, especially if you have, every, the average house has more than one vehicle in their house, you're not really saving.
In the scenario she says about commercial would potentially be less than, than a homeowner. So I, I have a number of concerns. My recommendation to the council is that we ride this year out and take a look at it, uh, after, uh, after one year.
I'm inclined to agree with that.
I'd like to become, make a motion that we actually take a vote on that.
So take no action, is that the motion?
Yeah, take no action, yep.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jack to take no action?
Second.
Second by Al. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carries unanimously. Okay, next we go to item.
So let me just, if you want to revisit this, probably it would be a good time, would be like September timeframe.
Okay.
You know, after the legislation session has ended, we've gone through the billing cycle, and if you would like, I can come back at it, maybe in like around that timeframe, either August, September, October, and we can discuss it again at that point.
Perfect.
So before the grand list gets done.
Yes, okay, we can definitely take that up in the, in the fall.
Aye.
Or the early summer, late summer. I always forget summer goes into September.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Now we are gonna go to item seven, which is, there's a memo in your packet, and John Ireland has joined us, our intrepid Board of Finance Chair, to discuss and approve the town manager's recommendation of considering to use one point five million of the capital fund to offset the interest payment on the short-term note for the Cromwell Middle School Project. John, would you like to begin by explaining this idea?
First, that's quite the intro, thank you.
You're very welcome. You're intrepid.
I've been called a lot of things, that's a new one. Uh, first and foremost, Ms. Julia, congratulations, you do a really nice job on, on the council and stuff, so. Thank you for letting me come and speak here tonight. So as, well, a good number of you now know, these three right here, when you're on the Board of Finance, uh, what you're looking for during budget season are options, right? We wanna see what we've got available to us to try to help take care of our expenses, uh, you know, put the, all the pieces together we need to, to create a budget, and hopefully do what we can for the taxpayer and for the residents, you know, concerning the mill rate. This fund that is there and, and being discussed here tonight uh, should have the ability to take care of interest as relates to the short-term note that we currently have out for the middle school that I believe is due sometime this fall. October of twenty twenty-five, to be exact, from our finance director. With our budget hearings coming up in early April, in order for us to make sure that we review all the information and we put forth for the referendum on May sixth, alright, that's the Tuesday, what I would just like to have this body consider and, and ask of it is to allow the Board of Finance to potentially have these funds available to use towards that interest, if we so choose, in order to help offset, um, uh, figures in the debt service that's currently being used or allocated to pay that interest come October. I'm not saying we're gonna use it, I'm not saying I'm, I'm looking for a definitive action on it tonight, but in order for us to know that we have accessibility to it, it needs your blessing and your okay first. So it can't wait until the mill rate meeting come May, because we wanna be able to provide an accurate debt service number to the town for the referendum on May sixth. And so if we were to try to use these funds to help offset or pay that interest, we would like to know that ahead of time, so that when we deliberate the debt service number, we know we can potentially have this. Again, this is not to say we're going to use it, this is not to say I'm asking and saying it's gonna happen, but with all the different options we may have, whether it be to pay for that interest through the debt service, or potentially roll it into something else, or to use these funds, through our deliberation, we, I would just like to know that our body would have access to it if, if so choose, so.
I, I think you, you want the options.
Option, I always want options.
You want the options, and without that, um, the folks on the Board of Finance would be, uh, would be stuck basically with trying to come up with something that they might not be able to come up with.
Well, it's, it's, again, I, I, I always wanna be sensitive to make sure that I was speaking for my entire board. I've got eight very qualified people that can speak for themselves. What I wanna make sure of is that as we deliberate and take a look at the needs of the town, uh, obviously, as we all know, you know, we, we've seen the initial numbers from both sides of the, the House, between the town and the Board of Ed, it's gonna be a tough, you know, uh, it's gonna be a tough ask to try to put all the pieces together and, and hopefully try to keep our mill rate, you know, relatively steady. So what I'd like to do is just, again, whatever motion you guys decide to make, again, I wanna make, make it clear that I'm not here saying it is going to be used towards it, but I would like to know that if we can't access it to help with the budget, that we can.
By the way, thank you. This has a chance of reducing our bonding rate, correct? Or shall I say, our debt services?
So the, the debt service number, that I believe you guys passed a few weeks ago during your budget hearing, uh, I believe in that figure included the interest that would then be paid for the note that comes up in October that, that Mr. Voe mentioned earlier. The potential would be that if the Board of Finance were to review that and say, hey, instead of the debt service at whatever number, two-point whatever, that we would then take, reduce that figure and potentially use these funds to say, okay, we're gonna use the money from this capital fund to take care of that interest, and then help offset what the debt service figure would be for this year, knowing very well that the next year, as you mentioned earlier in the meeting, we've got a, a little project that'll be, uh, going to bonding and, and coming on to, uh, coming out of the schedule.
So this will or will not be used, or is it going to be used to reduce the short, uh, debt?
From my understanding, the, the funds that I'm looking to, uh, the funds that, that are in this capital fund can be used towards the interest. And so as the Board of Finance deliberates, as we go through the Board of Ed budget, the town budget, and the debt service budget, if we so choose, and you guys grant us access to it, we would then consider using these funds as we deliberate and put it all together versus paying the interest through the debt service budget that's been passed by, by the town council.
So is there, I'm not gonna look for a guarantee, but is, this is not a guarantee that it's gonna go for the debt services, correct?
So I believe there are a, a couple caveats that these funds can be used for technically, so I don't want to go on the record and say that it would be definitely used for the interest. Obviously, with the large amount that's coming due and the amount of money that's in the fund here, that would be my anticipation, but I believe as, as the finance director might be able to, to further clarify, it does have some other caveats that you can use it towards larger capital projects and, and things like that.
That's what I was about to read. So it says that the town of Cromwell has established a special capital fund to account for the acquisition or construction of facilities, major infrastructure improvements or large equipment, so hypothetically, by, by, by making this motion tonight to allow you to, uh, use the capital fund, would you want us to make a motion even broader to say, consider using the capital, you, consider using one point five of the capital fund to offset interest payments of the short-term note or other capital expenditures approved by this body, so that way you have more flexibility?
I, I would certainly welcome that. As I mentioned in my opening, I am all about options. I am all about availability.
If, if the concept is to, to unencom, or to give the green flag to allow the capital funds to be dispersed even, either for debt service or for one of the other capital items that we have this year, I think a broader motion may be a little bit more in order to give you more options when you're, you're looking at your financing, because the fund dictates what you can spend it on. But you wanna be able to have our green flag to actually expend it when the time comes, so if at ten o'clock the night of the budget. expend it when the time comes. So if at ten o'clock the night of the budget vote, you guys are sitting here and you realize you need a hundred thousand dollars to pay for a dump truck, you're not saying, well, we're gonna have to raise the mill rate to pay, or whatever. I'm using that as an example.
It's, no, no, you're, you're a hundred percent right. This, this came down to a almost a timing, you know, kinda thing where.
Because you can't come back to us at that point.
Well, typically, right, with, with the funds and, and the, the revenue that we have available, that really comes down to the mill rate meeting, right? We, we passed our budget, we passed the referendum. Okay, now let's find all the different pieces and put it together. Because of the uniqueness of these funds and knowing that I need your blessing on it, we need to pass a debt service number that can go to the town. So we would needed to decide during our budget hearing versus the mill rate, how we're gonna make that debt service look. And obviously we can't take it out of the debt service and then not pay the interest.
Correct.
Because we didn't access this fund. So it's, that's where again, I'm not saying this is definitive.
Yeah.
It's just knowing we have it.
Given that the middle school is the largest capital expenditure that the town has taken on in a number of years, if not ever, is that seventy, is this the large?
Oh, it's gotta be ever, yeah.
It's the largest capital expenditure we've ever taken out in the history of the town. So I think it would be very appropriate to green light as you, as the Board of Finance sees fit to utilize the capital fund. I, I would like, if somebody else would entertain it, for a motion to amend the, the motion to change it to consider using 1.5 of the capital fund to offset the interest payment on the short-term note or for other purposes outlined in the capital fund at the end of it, adding the, or, well, for the middle, middle school project or for other projects within, that are appropriate under the capital fund to give you the flexibility to say if you wanna do debt, or can we do that, Chair?
Well, do we, do we, again, I haven't done a deep dive yet, but we, we know we might have some other opportunities to access, to use.
So I would say the motion, what I would be looking for if the folks on the body are, are amenable to it, is the motion as it's written there plus a additional clause that says, or for other appropriate capital fund items, or as, other appropriate special capital fund items.
I'd like to make the motion that we go according to the town manager's recommendation.
Only, with no addition, okay. So Al's proposal is to go by the town manager's recommendation, which is just for the purpose of the special interest payment on the short-term note for the Cromwell Middle School Project. Would that preclude, was, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Jack. So that would preclude, if the Board of Finance wanted to use it on, let's say, one of the dump trucks or one of the other capital items, they would have to find other funding for, or could they utilize this fund in a different way?
Since the dump truck is 290,000, that's a major.
Okay.
So that would be acceptable as a lot of the drainage projects would be also. So a lot of those can be incorporated into this fund here if the Board of Finance desires.
And it does not require it to come back to us?
No.
Only the special?
Not if you, not if you do it with your caveat.
Okay, so if I do it, if we vote for it with the caveat that I gave, the additional clause, then they could spend it for the dump truck or any of the larger items without that caveat, then they cannot, they're restricted.
They'd have to come back.
Would have to come back.
We have to go through it again.
Okay, so and, so they'll come, come back, is that what you're saying, Jack?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Al, which would just be for the, the note, short-term note, seconded by Jack. Any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention motion carries. So I, I'll support that and then if, if we decide we need to come back to, for other capital items, please, please as soon as possible let us know so we can have a meeting to come back and consider that.
Well, it's, listen, I appreciate it, thank you, and at least we know we've got that available to us, so. Take it free time.
Thank you. Next, I will move on to tax refunds, item 8K8.
Motion approved, 1 to 33.
Motion made by Al, seconded by Jack. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention motion carries unanimously. Chief of Police update.
So you should have my memo inside your packet, but besides that, reminding everybody that on April 6th, the Belden Room, which is a Sunday from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we are gonna have the Easter Bunny come and take some pictures. So anybody who'd like to come down, get their picture taken with the Easter Bunny, and we will be there from 10 to 1 on Sunday, April 6th, at the Belden Room. I wanna thank the mayor, Mr. Waters, and also Ms. Luna for attending. The square in an Officer Michael Wren, who sworn in last week and a half ago. He's doing so well, he'll be off FTO next week. He'll be off-field training. He'll be on his own. He, he, he's from Cromwell, so he knows town very well and he's doing a great job.
If I missed.
Mr. Waters, good.
Little humor. Do you have a car big enough for him to get into?
I'm gonna give him my car.
You're gonna give him your car?
Give him my little Taurus. Yes, I have a, yes, I have a big enough car.
If you, if you people seen this gentleman, he is a tall, tall dude.
He has a couple inches on you, Chief, right?
Yeah, he's taller than you.
Who knows? Same size, a little taller, who knows?
And about, a little bit more impoundage, though.
On our next note.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
As Mrs. Luna mentioned that the youth services had their get-together, Officer O attended it also, and I believe there was over 200 kids that came. It was, it was a good turnout. I'm sure everybody saw on Facebook, we had four brave officers do the penguin plunge. They asked me and I said, uh, not for me, a little cold for me, but, you know, Officer Jones, Officer Bielko, Detective Colt Jespersen and Sergeant Colgate braved the cold weather and jumped in the water. So, great for them. As you know, I mentioned Officer Wren is our 29th officer. I am currently working on a background for our 30th officer, which town manager and town council approved me to, to go up to, to get a third SRO. So my goal is to have that SRO ready for end of August. If, way things work out well, the new officer is a lateral and hopefully he'll be starting at the end of April. But I'll have more information as we get closer. I wanna make sure the background is all set. Besides that, I'm open up for questions.
Any questions for the chief?
April 6th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's in the Belden Room in the library.
10:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
One, yep. Come and take your picture, Al. Love to have you.
Any other questions for the Chief of Police?
Sure. Have we had any swatting incidents in Cromwell?
In the past, how far? We, have we ever had? Yes, we have had swatting.
Oh, in the past few years?
Yes.
We have?
Yes. We had one at the high school last year.
Okay.
Any further questions? The question was if there were any swatting incidences.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's when somebody uses the 911 system or the telephone system to call in a fake threat or a fake active shooter, and they usually come from either other states or either out of the country, and they ghost their phone so they can't tell you what number they're coming from, or they can make it where it looks like it's coming from my house, your house, Al's house. And this past one we had at the high school, someone said there was an active shooter in a high school, and luckily there wasn't, but it worked out well as far as our response goes and the way the school handled it, it worked out very well. But it came in as, the caller said that they were in the bathroom, they were gonna start shooting people. But it was a swatting incident.
Well, well, ma, maybe, maybe we shouldn't discuss the protocol for an active shooter situation in public session. I just, I, I, I think maybe that would be probably better left to maybe an executive session or some other private venue. Not that I don't think the public should be aware that we have a protocol, but I don't know if we should be discussing the protocol publicly because then somebody who may wanna take advantage of it will know what the protocol is.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't respond, Paul, to tell you how we respond to them, but if you're asking what the protocol is, as far as, God forbid, you're involved, you can call 911.
Okay, that was your question, Paul, and not what the town does, okay. I didn't wanna, yeah. So any other questions for the chief? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Chief.
Very good, thank you.
Director Spina.
Good evening. I'd like to add to a couple of the, a couple of the updates I submitted two weeks ago since so much time has gone by. The Little League lights did in fact get delivered and offloaded this afternoon. John Harriman was gonna reach out to the contractor that will be installed and then to make, make them aware of that, and we hope to see mobilization relatively quickly. In addition, I had, I have had a couple email exchanges with US Pitch Care. The tentative start date was April 1st, and hopefully they'll be able to meet that commitment as well to start the field swap with any luck. CHS bathroom update, again, this was submitted two weeks ago, so the sewer line was completed some point last week, and they immediately got to dig in for water lines and electric conduit. As of yesterday, with the rain over the weekend, they weren't able to get access to fields to get on and finish, but we do anticipate that being finished up within the next couple of days, weather permitting. Couple points that came up during the budget hearings a couple of weeks ago, the Richard Nobile Field House, we do have a permanent CO as of today, and that is for the building and the gas pumps as well. So the building and many of these are fully functional.
What was, so the, the leak issue, has that been, I know we were, guys weren't aware of it initially, but has that been resolved now?
Um, they thought it was. They went on the building, they went on the roof last week and they noticed a missing screw and some other screws that were loose. They put a screw in, they fastened down a bunch of others and were hoping that it did address the issue.
Are we gonna send a bill to the contractor for, for, for not, not drilling, or not finishing some screws on the roof of the building? I mean, this is, it's a 101.
I don't think they worked on the roof. They, they never went on the roof.
We did the roof, it was pre-existing?
So, so they, they were, they were hoping that they had pinned it down. Unfortunately, with the inch and a half plus of rain that we got this weekend, we put a bucket where the leak was. Good news is, is we know exactly where it is coming in and no damages being sustained at all. But there was two inches of water in the bucket again after this weekend. So they were gonna go up sometime this week, see if they can figure it out on their own, and if not, we'll call a, a contractor in that maybe has a keener eye for it and it will be addressed. At, at any, at any rate, it's being managed and watched. I mean, if an inch and a half of rain only put two inches of water in the bucket, it's a pretty small leak and nothing, again, nothing's being damaged.
And then with regards to how long it took to get like to your attention moving forward, so I'm just trying to figure out, because Brian brought it up, are we doing something to make sure that if there's a leak in one of our buildings, it doesn't take weeks for somebody to tell somebody else so that somebody else can put in a work order for it? I mean, like, right, because that, with water, that could be the ballgame.
Yeah. So, yeah, we've talked to staff. Obviously, again, I was disappointed that staff would reach out to an elected official before they would come to our office. So there has been some internal conversations related to that and hopefully, hopefully that addresses it and.
Yeah, but in, in all fairness to other staff, other staff was addressing it. However, they didn't bring it up the chain of command. But it wasn't like it was just allowing the leak. There was a, a bucket put there by a member of building maintenance, right? So the problem was being addressed, it just wasn't made known to the director or myself. Mr. Lou, can the contractor be liable for fixing this leak?
I, I don't believe they went. Yeah, it was the existing roof. They didn't, they, they didn't work on the roof externally at all, so.
Is that, is that a flat roof?
It's got a small pitch to it.
So it looks like maybe needs to be tarred?
It's, it's a metal roof, so, yeah. So hopefully, hopefully they figure it out. And again, if not, then we'll get a company that's familiar with metal roofs in there and, and maybe they'll pick up on it quicker than us, they're more, you know, keener eye.
Thank you.
One last update that, that wasn't here two weeks ago. We, we talked about our leaf composting pile during budgets as well. So I'm happy to report that sometime between tomorrow morning and then early next week, we'll be transporting the compost pile, in the fall of '23, when we did our curbside leaf collection, we took about 20% out of it to begin a pilot leaf composting program. That material is, is ready or very near ready to be utilized. So we're gonna, we have a demo late next week with the screening bucket you guys just approved for us a couple months ago with the last of the ARPA money. So we're gonna kinda take advantage of both and transport it up to the highway garage, screen it. Some of it will be utilized in the community gardens, so we usually, it'll save us money from purchasing a couple loads as we do annually. And then we are going to select a site, I believe it may be the community gardens, and offer it for free to the residents. There's quite a pile there, so we'll see how popular it is. If it goes slow, then we could offer it to our people that will purchase that, if, if, if not residents. And if it goes well, with, in the fall of '24, we got a pile that I'm told is about twice the size of the first year to, that will be ready at, probably 12 months from now. So again, we'll start slow and, and, and if it, and if it goes over well and it's popular, we can ramp it up a little bit.
That's great, Lou. Thank you, I really appreciate it. It's a great program and I'm glad it's getting off the ground and.
Yeah, I thi, I, I think it's gonna be received well and I, I think there's enough people in town that garden and a little bit of agriculture that they'll probably take advantage of it, but I guess we'll know more a couple of months from now.
Yeah, we'll see where the leaves fall.
And that's all I have, unless you guys have any other questions. Yeah, good.
Go ahead, Al.
I hope it doesn't wind up being the way Rocky Hill had theirs where it was one heck of a big mess they had on Forest Road. I don't know if you've ever seen that mess they had. They used to put the compost from the storm drains and all that mixed in.
Yeah, I know.
And it was, it was terrible.
Yeah. We're, we're, again, we'll, we'll take some of it, we'll use it in the garden and we may mix a little bit of it if there's enough in with some of the material up there to make some top sales. So when we go out doing our spring cleanup, again, we won't, we'll be purchasing less from vendors, saving us a little bit of money. But I'm curious, I am curious to see, and I'm kinda, you know, optimistic to see how it goes over. If we put it at the community garden, we're gonna have a sign there that says, for residents for use only, you know, please load with a shovel. So we don't want contractors coming in there with buckets and, you know, taking it for commercial use. But, you know, it is a, you know, priority one would be, let's see what type of residential interest there is in it.
That's great. And then one other question that I forgot. Did you, I don't know if you saw my email with the tree in the old burial ground. Is that our property that we were responsible for?
They took care of it yesterday. Within, within a couple hours of, I seen the email, it was gone.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate it. And were the headstones damaged or were they okay?
Uh, I wa, I wasn't made aware of any headstones. He said he went down there, the tree had fallen. They cut it up and removed it within a couple hours.
Good, good, good. Well, are there any other questions? Otherwise, I'll leaf it there.
Have a good evening.
You're, you too. Did, did you catch that one, Lou, or is it just too bad to acknowledge? I'll leaf it there. Okay, okay. It's nine o'clock, so you know, I gotta keep it light. Okay, now moving on to citizens' comments. I think in future meetings, what I'll do is I'll put citizens' comments in the beginning and then again over here. The point of it being here is so that people can hear all of the department updates before they give their citizens' comments, but it is nine o'clock and for people who've been here since seven, I apologize. But are there any citizens' comments out there? There are four, Ms. Kelly, Chairwoman Kelly, Registrar Kelly, Resident Kelly?
I just was, Alice Kelly, 47 Willowbrook Row, but also I'm now here about, as a registrar. I just looked here and it's talking about the referendum and it said, you know, to consider an act upon a resolution if approved by the Board of Finance. When is the Board of Finance going to meet? Because we have to have the ballot.
It was approved on February 27th by the Board of Finance.
Oh, because when I'm reading this, because we have to have the ballot made up, and I know that you've already worked on the wording for the ballot.
Yes, correct. It was approved in the February meeting pending town council approval.
Oh, okay. That's why. I just wanted to make sure so that we can go ahead, they can go ahead and get the ballot done for the absentee ballots and all this stuff as we come up to the May. And then also, are you having some type of a public hearing or something? Notice about, talking about the new thing for the scope.
Correct.
People are going to be confused.
We're gonna be having a public hearing. I've been working with the building committee to see what their availability is. They emailed me today that their, their, their ideal date right now is April 3rd. I've not talked yet to town staff about whether that would work on the town side, but I don't know. That night, so we won't be able to do April 3rd. That's fine. They were, there's a school vacation in April that they're trying to work around. So we're not gonna have it April 3rd. I will go back to them and get more dates and bring them back to the town. I asked them to look at their team and give me a date in April that worked. So there will be a public hearing. I'm gonna notice it in the newspaper and in Facebook and in the, so, the electronic billboard and in Town Hall. So we'll have a public hearing. I'll make sure that it's really well advertised so that the public can come and hear about the PV system, the solar panels, get clear answer, questions answered, and then they'll be able to make as informed of a decision as they can on May 6th. That was the date of the referendum, May 6th.
Okay, so that really on the ballot that we usually have for our town budget.
Correct.
It's like the general budget for the town, Board of Education, and then something that the people have no understanding of the debt service. They don't understand what that is. And then the next one will be just to actually increase the scope. Is that one, two, three, four? Is that how it's going to work?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to, you know, to be sure that, because you already have people saying is, what is this debt service? I said it's your mortgage. You know, you do already.
And even if you don't wanna pay, guess what, you're gonna have to pay it.
I mean, I think that's really what it is, correct?
It's previously approved appropriations.
Right, and I said instead of debt service, just say, as you know, all the things that you agreed upon, this is the, you have to pay every year for it, like your mortgage. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Any other citizens' comments? I see three folks in the audience. Anything, anything, Marilyn? Anything, Marilyn, you're on the agenda tonight, so. Yep, for reappointments. So I think that's what she's here for, so. Always good to see her. I know you had EDC earlier tonight, so thank you for joining us. Okay, we will now, does anyone need a break or can we keep forging ahead? Keep forging. Um, okay, discussion, action item oh-one. Discussion on possible action on the climate and culture study. I think we don't need to do anything on that. I gave the update earlier. The surveys are out. And then next is discussion and review of the Town Engineer's Memo regarding the CHS athletic facility and parking. Mr. Town Manager, seeing that John's not here, do you wanna go over it?
In the packet is, uh, John's memo as well as, what the heck is it? Has the, uh, conceptual diagram of, uh, of the campus. And, um, as you can see, if, if we were to start moving stuff around, it means that we would have to redo the entire campus with regards to the fields.
So, so if I understand this correctly, if we were to redo the parking lot, we'd have to re-field all of the fields?
No, not so much the parking lot.
Okay.
If they wanted to move, um, the, the field there, the, the, the present soccer field to a location so that it could be used as, um, football and, uh, and, uh, I was looking for the diagram.
It's the last page of that little, uh, that little piece.
So, if you wanted to move the field, it would have to go over in the center. Then we would have to, um, move the baseball field, which we just spent a considerable amount of money on. And, um, and then reestablish, um, other, the other fields. The parking, we would, uh, we would place where the tennis courts are. And the tennis court would be relocated over by the school, uh, to the west side. So if, if you look at the diagram, this diagram, you'll see in order to put the track in the field, there's no room and you don't do east-west.
Yep.
I know there was some talk about, but you don't put a field east-west. Your fields run north, uh, south. And, uh, if we were to move it over so that you could have lights and, uh, the PA system and all that stuff and not disturb the neighbors, it would mean completely redoing this whole campus.
Okay. And with the diagram is showing an alternative where you keep the track where it is and you redo the parking and you move the tennis courts?
Correct.
Okay. And so the.
At a future date.
At a future date for the tennis courts. So the total price of that project is almost four million dollars. What is it? And if you remove the tennis courts, it's, it's, it's three million instead of four million?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, if we could find the money, the track is number one.
Yep.
Parking, we feel is, is a necess- a necessity. That is number two. And then somewhere down the line, um, someday, uh, give them their own tennis courts.
So this year, we, we applied for, uh, for state bonding on the track portion, the repaving of the track portion.
That's correct.
And if that's successful, then the remaining parts of the project would be the, the work on that parking lot. And then a phase three someday in the future would be the tennis courts. But we could split this into three phases essentially.
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, though, we are, um, since Representative Carpiano was successful, we are installing bathrooms, uh, on the field out there for men's and women's.
With regards to our bond request for the track, is there anything that Lesser or Carpiano are recommending that we do? Like, should we have our, our track and, or our field teams write letters to the governor and the bond council? Like, or put together a packet to submit, like lobby for it at all? Because it's, is there anything we can do?
He hasn't said anything yet.
Okay.
Usually the bonding doesn't come up till the end of the session.
Okay, because I, I think that, that track, improving that track and the way that they're proposing to do it, which is just resurfacing it, will be an economical way to have the biggest impact. And I mean, hundreds of kids use that track. And then I, I think that's a huge impact. So I, I, anything we can do to try to move the needle on it and show how important it is to the whole community and how it's not just a track that's used once, uh, once a week. It's used every single day, seven days a week by a lot of different people in town and out of town. Uh, okay, so this, so what are the next steps for this athletic complex proposal that's, that the Town Engineer has here? Is there anything?
We're kinda moving along, again, have been, uh, with the bonds for, uh, the track.
Yep.
The fact that we're putting the bathrooms that the representative got us.
Yep.
And since planning and zoning kinda nixed the, uh, I call football stadium style, I think this is the direction we're moving in. Unless this council wants to, uh, basically we look at it and decide to move the, uh, the field.
And I think we've talked about how cost prohibitive moving that field would be. And you just outlined the issues that would be involved with it as well. So, uh, and it would kill that new di- baseball diamond we just built, um, or rebuilt. So, okay, should I bring this with John to planning and zoning for their, like, to, to have their feedback on it at their next regular meeting? Is that something you want me to do? Or do you want me just to sit and wait for now?
Well, right now, the track does not require planning and zoning.
Just the parking and the tennis court portions of it?
Just the parking and, um.
And right now, so.
Right now, we're not ready to go on the parking.
Okay, perfect. So we'll, we'll just let it lie for now.
I would say if, if, if everybody's kind of of the consensus, this is the way it's gonna stay. Whether or not I have my own druthers on turf also, uh, whether it's natural grass or, or turf, I still say, uh, if, if you're not gonna put football up here, then, uh, we continue to work on this, the way it's basically laid out and with those changes that we're recommending.
So keep, uh, right now, keep everything at the high school grass, replace the current track at the current location with the same facility, same footprint. And eventually in a phase two with the parking lot expansion and then a phase three some date in the future for the tennis court expansion. Got it.
And I would also submit that we're, we have to be there because, uh, with the results of the planning and zoning and the situations that we've been through, we, we either move in this direction or we stop. So we, at this point, we, we keep moving. Cause we're gonna, we're gonna progress. It may not be what everybody would like, but, uh, at least we can get some things done and make it better for the, for the high school. At least, I believe.
Gotta fix, yeah, we gotta fix the track.
The track has to be fixed.
That's number one. Alrighty, any further discussion on that, uh, memo from the Town Engineer? Okay, hearing done now, we'll move on to item P one, which is dissolution of the Athletic Field Committee. I think we created them a number of years ago for the purpose of looking into turf, looking into, uh, building a field. And I think at this point, uh, there's, they've kind of been rudderless for a little bit. And I think, uh, the concept is to dissolve them and then, you know, work with the Recreation Commission more directly to, uh, keep, you know, momentum going on the high school or whatever other projects we have.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Al.
Second.
Second with Jack. Any further discussion with that? Hearing done, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I want to thank the Athletic Committee members, uh, for their work over the last three, uh, three years with different concepts, different plans, um, different ideas. They were very diligent and volunteer many, many hours of their time advocating for the athletics of the youth of the town with many different iterations. And, uh, I think it was time that was instructive and educational for everyone involved. Obviously, it didn't bear the fruits of what I think the group was hoping. But I think we now have a little bit more direction. And I think working with Recreation, working with the plans that we've started, hopefully over the next two and a half years, we can continue to develop these plans into something that's actionable and shows a meaningful benefit for the residents of the town. So I want to thank them for their steadfast dedication and work with the town. And I'll reach out to the members individually and, and talk to them about other ways that they can stay involved.
Just one thing I'd like to say is that I hope all the people associated with that will still be thinking about what the opportunities could be. And if we have opportunities down the road where things change, either attitudinally or financially, uh, and we can bring some other things to light where there, there are opportunities that might present themselves, I, I hope the folks that were associated with that and were, um, were interested in progressing the athletic opportunities, uh, I hope they continue to stay engaged.
I agree. I agree. Alrighty, moving on to item P two, which is new middle school and central offices to consider an act upon a resolution affirming its recommendation to increase the project scope of the previously approved seventy-two million six hundred thousand appropriation and borrowing authorization for the new middle school, central offices to include a photovoltaic system.
What is that? May I ask?
Solar, solar panel, yeah.
Oh.
And then, um, so let me just look at our packet here. Is the resolution that we're, we're approving in this packer? Have we already approved that resolution? I'm looking. I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking for the res- yeah, I'm looking for the resolution. I don't see it in, in my e-packet that I have here and I don't see it in the papers that I have with me today. Yes, this is exactly what I'm looking for. Did you, I didn't see this in there. Okay, so I, I, um, so would there be two questions on the referendum or would there be one item on the referen-? The one, the second question is the referendum question, the first one that's in the packet.
Yeah, the, the question should be the exact one on the agenda, but.
Okay.
Here's where you set the date of the referendum and all we have to do is plug in the date.
Okay, so this was not.
No, this is the packet I submitted to Bond Council.
Okay, so this first page needs to be approved this evening?
Well, you have to approve this first that you want to do it and then you have to send it to referendum.
Yep, explain why there's two here.
The council hasn't sent it yet.
Okay.
So the council has to send it to referendum.
Do I need to read this into the record this evening?
So, so there, there's two, so you have to take two votes.
Okay.
One, uh, you approve the question and two, uh.
We send it to referendum?
Send it to referendum.
So, okay, so here's what we'll do. We'll read those two. This is the proposed, this is the proposed resolution for the Town Council that we are, um, approving in question one then tonight. Because it's, the, question one is to consider an act upon this resolution. Question two is to approve the referendum question. That's the way I'm reading it. Because it said, the first one is to say to consider an act upon a resolution. So this is the resolution. So let me read the resolution. Resolved that the Town Council affirms its recommendation that the Town of Cromwell increase the project scope of the previously approved seventy-two million six hundred thousand dollars appropriation and borrowing authorization for the new middle school and central offices to include a photovoltaic system. So that is our, our resolution. And then we have our referendum, which is resolved that the Town Council hereby, so this would be question, so that would be question number one, if we approve that. And then question number two, this is what we'd be approving in full. Resolved that the Town Council hereby submits the above resolution to the voters at a referendum, which vote shall be held on blank, 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 and we'll do May sixth, um, twenty-twenty. Twelve to eight PM at Cromwell High School in the manner provided by the Town Charger Charter and said general statutes. The afterfore resolution shall be submitted to the voters under the following heading. Shall the Town of Cromwell amend the previously approved seventy-six, seventy-two million six hundred thousand dollar appropriation and borrowing authorization for the construction of a new middle school and central offices to increase the project scope to include a photovoltaic system? Voters approving the resolution will vote yes and those opposing the resolution will vote no. Absentee ballots will be available at the Town Clerk's Office. Further resolved that the Town Clerk, in her discretion, is authorized to prepare and to cause to be printed and distributed in accordance with the provisions of section nine dash three sixty-nine B of the Connecticut General Statutes, revision nineteen fifty-eight, as amended, an explanatory text with respect to the afterfore mentioned question to submit to the voters at referendum and that the first selectman, I'm gonna say, the mayor, the mayor in his discretion, it should read, so I'm gonna amend that. The mayor, in his discretion, is authorized to prepare and distribute such additional explanatory materials with respect to such question as are permitted in accordance to section nine dash three sixty-five B. And that such explanatory texts or additional materials prior to the distribution shall be approved by the Town Attorney in accordance with section nine dash three sixty-nine B. Further resolved that the notice of representative, uh, of referendum is substantially following form is hereby approved to read as follows. There is then a notice of legal referendum that we'd be approving as well to be published in the local paper. It would be dated whatever date is the publication. And it is much the same as before, but for the purposes of the record, since it wasn't in the packet, I will read it out. So that way the record reflects accurately what the, um, referendum notice will say. So we would be approving a referendum notice in the newspaper, which would say, a referendum of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in the town meetings of the Town of Cromwell, Connecticut will be heavily tuned the hours of noon, twelve and eight PM on, I'm sorry, let me reread that. The hours of twelve, noon and eight PM on May sixth, twenty twenty-five at Cromwell High School, Donald Harris Drive, Cromwell, Connecticut, for the purposes of voting on a resolution to amend the previously approved seventy-two million six hundred thousand dollar appropriation and borrowing authorization for the construction of a new middle school and central offices to increase the project scope to include a photovoltaic system. The full text of the resolution is on file and available for public inspection at the Town Office, Office of, apologies, for public inspection at the Office of the Town Clerk during normal business hours. The resolution will be placed on the ballot with the following heading. Again, the heading will be, shall the Town of Cromwell amend the previously approved seventy-two million six hundred thousand dollar appropriation and borrowing authorization for the construction of a new middle school and central offices to increase the project scope to include a photovoltaic system? Voters approving the resolution will vote yes and those opposing the resolution will be voting no. Tabulators will be used. Absentee ballots are available at the Town Clerk's Office, forty-one West Street, Cromwell, Connecticut. And they be picked up there, dated this blank day of blank twenty twenty-five. James Mietratus, Mayor, Town of Cromwell. So, what I'm gonna be looking for then, I understand now that I have these two here things with me. We have to first adopt this resolution, which is the first page of what I read. And then we have to, um, approve going to referendum, which will be the, uh, the legal notice that I read, in addition with setting the time of the referendum, the dates into that resolution. So. Yes.
According to this seventy-two million six hundred, it, it, are we, do, or should I say, do we have approval from the Bonding Commission to move forward with that?
This language has been approved by Bond Council?
That, that is from the Bond Council.
Okay.
And what about the State of Connecticut?
Uh, yes, they, they have put it on their application. They applied to state for the grant.
Okay.
They added it to their scope.
All right, so we're covered.
We're covered, okay.
Good, thank you.
So if, if, are there further questions or discussion on this? Because if not, then I'll take a motion to approve the referendum as read and as written. Uh, and as written, if there were verbal typos, I'm gonna defer to what the Bond Council has physically written. I made a couple of oral errors there.
Does it say anything uh, about solar panels?
That that's the photo, photovoltaic is solar panels. Photovoltaic is the name, is is the, voltaic, sorry. Photo, phot- voltaic is solar panels, so.
I think when you do it, without solar panels.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say solar panels. I'll stand outside the the um, I mean, or so are you, are we saying that we should put in parentheses after it's the word solar panels? So people know that it's it's solar panels? So um, let me do this. So let me have a motion to amend the resolution that I read, that anywhere that the question shall appear, that we add the words in parentheses, solar panels after the word, anywhere that the word photovoltaic system appears.
Motion approved.
Made by Paula, seconded by Al. Do I have any other discussion on that? Hearing none for the amendment to add, anywhere that photovoltaic appears, photovoltaic system appears, to put solar panels in parentheses afterwards. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, great. Um, oh, may I also have a motion to amend the resolution to say, mayor, in his discretion?
So moved.
Made by Jack.
Second.
Second by Paula. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. So now we have two amendments to the resolution. Hearing those two amendments, um, can I now have a motion to approve the referendum as, uh, not the referendum, the resolution as amended? Made by Julia, second by Jack. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Great. Um, and now I will have a motion to approve the setting of the referendum question and the publication of the notice of referendum and the, putting the resolution to referendum, I should say. So do I have a motion to put the resolution to referendum and to publish the legal notice as outlined in the uh, agenda? Perfect, referendum to, the the resolution to referendum.
Resolution to referendum.
There we go.
Discussion for a moment?
Yep.
Uh, I think. They don't put many signs out there to let people notice votes. It seems like just probably maybe eight to ten signs I'll have ever seen out there at certain intersections, which I think they should turn around and put more signs out there so people have the opportunity. Cause a lot of people turn around and say, I didn't know that, I didn't know they were voting.
Can we put this on the Cromwell, um, uncensored Facebook?
I'll, I'll.
James can do that.
I'll put it on both uncensored Facebooks because now we have two of them again.
Well, we have, now have two?
We have two again, there's been a split. It's just like the church, they keep splitting off to make another church. We got, we got two uncensored, we have a Cromwell families, and we have a Cromwell connection, and we have, so we have four, I think, right now. Cromwell positive has retired. So, you know. Yeah, they retired. So um, I have a motion from Jack. Do I have a second to um, consider an act upon the resolution, setting the time and date for a referendum? To consider an act upon the resolution affirming the recommendation for, so Jack, Jack made the motion. Do I have a second? I have a second from Julia. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, next, we have approve and adopt the amendment to the Cultural District Ordinance thirty-six dash one A to expand the boundaries of the cultural district.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, second. Uh, as I discussed earlier, this is the border expansion, so it includes all of Main Street. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We have now amended the um, the the ordinances. Okay, now for minutes, um. If everyone was here for all of them. Yeah, I think, other than Ann, I think everyone was here for all of them. So um, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February third special meeting, the February third public hearing, the February twelfth regular meeting, and the March fourth, uh, public hearing, and the March fourth budget workshop? Motion made?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. 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 Abstention. One abstention and no nays, passes. Uh, next, we have item R, this was previously discussed at another meeting, to appoint Kevin Van Der Slu as the Director of Emergency Management. Can I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve made by Al, seconded by Jack. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Um, welcome back, Captain Van Der Slu. Happy to have him in that capacity.
I'd like to make a motion on two for reappointments. We go from A through D, please?
Yes, I'm fine with that. Do I have a second on that? Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries. Um, oh, I have one informational item that I didn't bring up during my mayor's update. Um, Brian, no, 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 it's important, it's important. Um, Brian attended, because Brian wasn't here. So Brian attended the fire commission meeting. As you may know, I sent a letter with you, I think this body's blessing, to say, why don't we have our elections and our referendums and our everything on the same day? They wanna know, so the the body wants to know from the town, is it going to be in kind, i.e. we cover all the costs out of the, uh, for the, for that? Or are they gonna be expected to cover the costs of the ref- part of the referendum and or the elections? And if so, they wanna know what their share is. Um, so that was the question that was posed, so.
Wants to know what the share, the board of it?
The the fire district.
I would, I would ask, uh, what does it cost them?
Okay, I can go back, we can go back and find out.
Because I would wanna know, if it costs them nothing, then they shouldn't, they should just do, continue to do the nothing piece. On the other hand, if it costs them something, then we can work as a team.
Yeah.
Which we should do.
They 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 do a part, one half is in the atrium, but they hire, for one of them, they hire Bonnie and and.
Which that there's so.
And Alice.
This is gonna, this is all stopping and it's gonna be through the town.
Okay, okay, through the town. Got it? Perfect. Through the town.
I'm okay with that.
Through the town, that makes sense, okay. Um, so just an informational item, I, Brian asked me to pass it along, so I forgot to do it earlier, so that's my apologies. Um, with that, any other informational items?
If I may.
Yep.
Mr. Salvatore, I did leave a message through your secretary, referenced the the dirt, or shall I say the fill that came out of the new foot, the new uh, baseball field there on be- behind the high school? I don't know if you got word of that, because I happened to see a trailer, a dump truck come on out of there with some very rich topsoil. Went down Washington Road, got on Nine North, and wherever that went.
Yeah, they owned it.
Is that part of the deal when they bid?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other informational items about anything that's coming up? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn at nine thirty-three. Made by Julia, seconded by Paula. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries. I'm gonna call that unanimously.